...are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the city council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on February 11th, 2019. Please join Councilmember Cano on the Pledge Allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father God, thank you for the many blessings you have given us in our city. We have many opportunities and many complex decisions to make that will grow Goodyear into its best and greatest potential. We invite you into our chambers and into this meeting. There are two significant reasons to celebrate in February. First, let us pause for a moment to consider the significance of Black History Month as we honor, remember, and celebrate the important contributions and achievements of African-Americans throughout our country's history. We acknowledge the enduring and inspirational triumphs and successes of African-Americans in our local history and in building our future. We are blessed to be a thriving and diverse community. It's also a time we love to celebrate love. On February 14th, there will be classroom parties, special date nights, and family gatherings. Let love be the prevailing force that overcomes the anxiety and animosity of these days. Let love and mercy be the currency we spend freely. Let us truly love our neighbors as we love ourselves. And Lord, in Goodyear, we love our police, fire, and military. It is our prayer that you will always keep them safe in your care. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Cano, for that wonderful prayer. All right, we're going to go, we're all here this evening, and so we're going to go directly to the communication. We have one item. The council received an overview of the spring training 2019 session. Bruce Kessman, ballpark general manager, presenting. Bruce?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. We have an exciting year coming up as we celebrate 10 years of baseball here in Goodyear. So it'll be the 10th anniversary for the Indians and the 10th season for the Reds. And a lot of things, as you can imagine, are going to revolve around the number 10 this year. So we were able to secure 10 days of giveaways. Kids' Days, all five Sundays, will have kids-only giveaways. And on Saturdays, we have the bobbleheads, drawstring backpack, sunglasses. So again, 10 days of giveaways. Something different that we're doing this year is we're going to have the Dinner on the Diamond to celebrate our 10-year employees as well as our 10-year season ticket holders, and that's going to be on February 20th, starting at 4:30 in the evening. And then we're going to continue the celebration and have an additional kind of celebration party at the ballpark when the Reds and Indians play each other again on March 17th. On that day, we're going to hand out 2,000 scratch-offs. One in 10 people will win one of 10 different prizes. Of course, opening day, it's just a little less than two weeks away, on February 23rd. We're going to have a commemorative ticket giveaway. That's the picture that you'll see right there on the screen. Player autographs, the Swing Kings Band will be out front, creating that fun, lively atmosphere out in the plaza area. It is also the charity game, which will be benefiting the Southwest Valley YMCA and also the New Life Center. And again, we'll be debuting the new ballpark mascot on opening day.
I'm looking forward to that.
Some of the new concessions items that we have online this year, the hash-green chili burger, the cactus dog, which is actually made of the prickly pear, has prickly pear syrup on it, really kind of unique to the southwest. Some other fan favorites that are found in other ballparks. And the Philly cheese steak dog, mixing, you know, two ballpark favorites together into one. And then we'll also be introducing beer flights in three different locations in the ballpark. And you'll see, actually, on the picture there, we're actually just constructed a new left-field concessions area, which will be one of the destinations for Ohio beers. So we were able to secure a few more beers from Ohio to bring that down so our fans can enjoy those. And of course, we're all about the fan experience here in Goodyear. And continuing with, you know, some of the fan favorites, but this year, we're actually introducing now a kids-on-field experience. Well, 50 kids on Saturdays, the first 50 through the gates, will have an opportunity to go down onto the field, maybe to collect some autographs, but have that up-close-and-personal experience right on the playing field. We'll continue with Kids' Day Sundays, where kids run the bases after the game, catches on the field, the senior stroll on every Monday game. Then we have a few very unique fan experiences, which are a little bit more for the, I guess, the really die-hard fan with the player broadcaster meet-and-greets, the batting practice fan zone, where you're actually down at the complex prior to the game, and you're watching the players take batting practice from the warning track. We have another on-field workout. And then, of course, we're going to continue with the military and veteran ticket offers, which are very unique to Goodyear. Again, we have a great line of great promotions. Everything can be found on our website, GoodyearBP.com, and hope to see you at the ballpark.
Great, thank you so much, Bruce. Any comments from the council here? Are y'all, are you ready? Got your ball?
We're ready.
Hat and all of those? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, play ball. I think it's a great, a lot of hard work, and I think it'd be a great celebration of 10 years with our partnership with both the teams. So thank you for putting it together and working hard to making a celebration like it should be. So, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm excited to be there, so.
Thanks for those comments. Councilmember Stip?
Bruce, as has become the pattern the last three years, I will be traveling through most of spring training, and will miss opening day, the dinner on the diamond, et cetera. But my absence is not a reflection of my lack of enthusiasm for the ballpark, the staff, everybody else there. So please make sure that they know how excited I am that the season's coming. Make sure the teams know that they've got my full support, even though I'm physically not there. But congratulations on the tenure. We're looking forward to the next 10.
Councilmember Loretano?
Congratulations, and it's going to be great. Do we have a lot of nighttime games this year?
Actually, we have a total of nine night games.
Really?
Yes. We actually talked to the teams to try to see if one of them would pick up another one so we can have 10, to stay with the 10 thing, but we're stuck with nine.
Well, that's great, because I, working, I mean, that's great.
Yes.
You can't always get to the day games. And what is a beer flight? I don't know what that is.
So it's like a sampler. So you'll have, you can get four, five-ounce beers, so you can get four different.
Brandon knew what it was.
They've become increasingly popular.
Mayor, can I add my two cents?
I'm sorry, I was talking to our lawyer, and I missed it. So did you finish your comment?
I just asked what a beer flight was, and Brandon helped tell me.
Uh-huh. Anyone on this side? Well, I can't wait to it. I want to see the new costume.
Opening day.
Yes, it's opening day, so we can't get any previews, peeks or anything, so you're just keeping this a big secret.
Absolutely. Yep.
We're looking forward to it. Yes.
So I just wanted to thank whoever gave us our ballpark shirts. They're beautiful, and we'll proudly wear them throughout the whole spring training session. But, you know, we always have such a great time, and our volunteers are wonderful, and you and your staff go above and beyond the call of duty to make everyone feel welcome and safe. And thank you so very much for all that you do with your staff.
Thank you. Thanks for the comments.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda items. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, well, then we'll just go on to the consent agenda, and we'll, the city clerk, please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.4 by title only.
6.1, approval of minutes. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2019-1931, conditionally approving relinquishment of city's interest in certain drainage easements within Palm Valley Phase 2, providing for an effective date for the relinquishment, imposing conditions for relinquishment to be effective, providing authority to city attorney, imposing a deadline for completion of the relinquishment, authorizing future actions by city manager, and providing an effective date of the resolution. 6.3, approve the final plat for Estrella Parcel 11.D1. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2019-1937, authorizing the issuance of at-risk construction permits to allow the grading and compaction, including excavation, and to allow the installation of utility pipes and a foundation to be poured before the issuance of a building permit.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the council wish me to read one item from the consent agenda? All right, then I'd like a motion and a second to approve the items 6.1 through 6.4 by, on the consent agenda. Do I hear that motion?
No, second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second by Councilman Hampton. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, let's go on to 7.1, the first item business is continuation from the January 28th to consider the request to rezone the 95-acre Airport Commons property at the southwest corner of Bullard and Van Buren Street from agriculture-urban to light industrial park, general commercial, and multifamily residential. The city clerk? Oh, this is the information I wanted to give to the people in the audience. I go on with what you, is that correct? I just want to make sure. So the second part of this, before we get the presentation, the city clerk has read the title for resolution 2019-1927. This is from the past meeting. There is a motion on the floor by the councilmember Loretano at that time, second by councilmember Pizzillo, to adopt the resolution number 2019-1927. So while the public hearing was closed on January 28th, and the council received the initial presentation, we are going to get a refresher from Karen Craver, Planner 3, this night. So Karen, you're on to give the personal, a personal view on what went on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The Goodyear Airport Commons property is located on the south side of Van Buren Street, and it extends from Bullard Avenue on the east to the Bullard Wash property on the west. And just to the west of the Bullard Wash property is the Centerra Single Family Neighborhood. This request is to rezone the property from AU agricultural urban to 67 acres of I-1 property, 12 acres of C-2 general commercial property, and 12 acres of MF-24 multifamily property with a PAD overlay. The underlying zoning designations actually reflect a general plan amendment that was done on the property back in 2008. The PAD overlay is being requested so that this flex zoning area of five acres may develop as either commercial or multifamily, depending on market conditions. And because staff heard the concerns of the Centerra residents at the last meeting, we are recommending that four additional stipulations be added to those that were previously provided to you. Step one is, except as otherwise provided in a development agreement approved by the City of Goodyear City Council, owner shall, at owner's sole cost, provide the city with a physically and legally available water supply sufficient to provide the water service needed to serve the property that satisfies the Arizona Department of Water Resources standards for modifications of designations of assured water supply to increase the designation water portfolio by an amount equivalent to the amount of the additional water needed to serve the property, and that provides for sufficient extinguishment credits or renewable supplies to offset the additional water demands. Number two, except as otherwise provided in a development agreement approved by city council, owner shall, at its sole cost, design, install, and/or construct all infrastructure onsite and/or offsite, convey all land necessary for such infrastructure, and acquire all equipment, capital equipment necessary to allow the city to provide water and wastewater service to the property at build-out. Number three, all outdoor storage areas for materials, trash, equipment, vehicles, or similar items shall be screened from view from residential properties, including the western property line in Bullard Wash. Screening shall be a combination of trees and shrubs, as approved by the zoning administrator, and as depicted in Exhibit A, screening exhibit. And the last one is, loading, delivery, roll-up dock doors, and service and wash bays may not face any planned or existing residential use that is within 500 feet unless all of the following conditions are met. A, loading, delivery, roll-up dock doors and service and wash bays facing a single residential, facing a single-family residential use must be located 500 feet from a single-family residential property line. And B, the loading, delivery, roll-up dock doors and service and wash bays may only occupy 50% of the building facility facing the single-family residential use. And C, all loading, delivery, roll-up dock doors and service and wash bays that face any residential use or planned residential use shall be screened from view by a combination of trees and shrubs, as approved by the zoning administrator, and as depicted in Exhibit A, screening exhibit. And this is that screening exhibit. And what I would focus your attention on here is this line of site study that was done. Over on the west here, you would have residences within the Centerra neighborhood, and the block wall that is along the eastern portion of Centerra. Then you have the Bullard Wash property, the buffer that will be constructed along with a DG path on the eastern side of the Bullard Wash property. Then you would have retention that would occur as part of the industrial development. Then you'd have screen walls, and then you get to some, you know, typically, there may be some outside equipment, and then a building. And so just going from this block wall to this block wall before you even get to the building, that's about 600 feet. And staff continues to recommend approval of the rezone, subject to the stipulations that were in the original ordinance, plus the four that I have read into the record tonight.
Thank you for the presentation, Karen. I want to correct myself. I said a personal presentation. Yes, you made the presentation, but it wasn't your personal. It was the done by the staff and the correct method. So we're going to do a roll call at this time. So, city clerk, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Okay, we were, we were in the middle of the meeting, and so we never completed this. So, and it was active, so we had, we have to use the motion and the second from the last meeting.
Right, so what are we voting on?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you're voting on the resolution right now declaring the matter a public record. The next time will be the ordinance, and that would be where we'd want to attach the stipulations when we get to that.
You will have a chance to discuss this, because we'll ask for another moment.
Now that I know what I'm voting on, aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, well, the city clerk, please read ordinance 2019-1422 by title only.
Adopt ordinance number 2019-1422, rezoning approximately 95 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Bullard Avenue and Van Buren Street from the AU agricultural urban zoning district to the I-1 light industrial park, C-2 general commercial, and MF-24 multifamily zoning districts with a PAD overlay, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second? Adopt ordinance 2019-1422. Do I hear the motion?
Don't move.
I hear second.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. We are now open for council discussion. Councilman Loretano?
Did we have to add the stipulations to that one?
Madam Mayor, if we want to include the stipulations, we need to reference that into the motion. So we need to adopt the ordinance as read by the clerk, incorporating the stipulations as presented by staff.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the resolution, the ordinance with the stipulations that were discussed and by staff.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, second by Councilman Pizzillo. And roll call vote?
Discussion.
Discussion? Thank you. No discussion? Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
May I say anything or not?
It's up to you, Mayor.
All right, well, I'm going to do it, because I just think it's the right thing to do. During the discussion at the last meeting on this case, we had, Susan Jackson came forward, and she lives in the area, and so she was concerned about the building of it. And so she turned in her card tonight, and because, under the process of this, they're not allowed to speak in this meeting, because we had already passed it from the past meeting. But I just wanted to let her know that many of the things she did say did affect us, and I believe this briefing tonight clarified some of those. So the space between the Wash and the homes, the size of the, the size of the wall, the extra space again, and the doors at the other side, so they're not looking right at them, the high fence line or wall lines. So I just, I hated to leave this card without saying something to our resident. And I know this is always, change is always very difficult, but I appreciated the fact that Ms. Jackson came tonight, and I understand her circumstances and how she feels. So thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead on to the next, all right? Open a public hearing in 7.2, hearing for the development impact fee audit. The meeting is open. Jared S. Kelson, finance manager, presenting. I know, I must have murdered that name. Why didn't you pronounce it once more time?
Askelson.
Askelson. Well, that was easy, and what I said. Good.
Good evening, Mayor Lord.
Well, Jared, go ahead. Do you have the floor?
Members of the council, we're here tonight to have a public hearing on our development impact fee audit. This audit is required by state law, along with posting of that audit to our website, which we have done, and the final piece tonight is to have a public hearing on that audit. We do this audit every two years. The term of this audit is going to be looking at is July 1st, 2016, through June 30th of 2018. This audit was of the 2014 study fees, not the ones that were recently adopted last month. The audit was completed by Heinfeld, Meach, and Company, the same company that does our annual financial audit. Five areas are looked at during this audit, progress on the infrastructure improvement plan, also referred to as an IIP, the collection and expenditure of the fees, looking at any inequities in the plan or the fees, making sure that construction sales taxes applied appropriately to the infrastructure, and that the annual report on development impact fees is in compliance with state law. There were two findings of the audit. The first had to do with the progress of the IIP. They looked at the variances in population, housing units, and permits, and saw that they were lower than what was originally put into the plan. That also resulted in lower revenues and was offset by lower infrastructure costs. The second finding had to do with the collection and expenditure of fees. There was an inconsistent square footage on a permit and the fee that was collected. This was one out of the 40 that were reviewed. This resulted in $171, less than the required amount was collected. We will backfill that with general fund dollars. Also, that resulted in a developer reimbursement being $171 less than it should be in that. Reimbursement will also be made. The actual transaction occurred in January of 2017, and since that time, the permit process has changed so that there's an additional review step that takes place on any impact fee transaction in the building permit area. So tonight, we're conducting the public hearing. The presentation I have just given, along with receiving any public comment, will then close the public hearing and accept the development impact fee audit.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, we're going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion and a second to accept the development impact fee audit? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Cano, and a second by Vice Mayor, I mean, Councilman Pizzillo. Over to council discussion. Yes, Councilman Pizzillo.
Yeah, I know, when you put these together, it's an estimate. It's your best guess. And I guess my question is, on, from a variance standpoint, this isn't the first audit we've had, correct? We've had others.
That is correct.
How do we compare as far as getting as close as we can to our target to what this one produced?
Councilmember Pizzillo, this audit actually was very similar to what we had done in the past as far as that variance on the growth. Now, like I had mentioned, that, that growth, the decrease in growth, or the variance, negative variance in growth that you're seeing is offset by the amount that we spend. We don't build as much infrastructure if the growth doesn't occur.
So it doesn't impact the overall infrastructure, because the less money, you just won't build as much?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's vote. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, 7.3, last item on business, is approve the FY 2020 Annual Public Art Plan. Always like to hear this. Our presenters tonight are Galene Ozelinski, Arts and Culture Coordinator, and she will be joined by Jennifer Barnes, the Art and Culture Commission Public Subcommittee Chairman. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Very excited to be here this evening with you. This evening, we're here to ask council's consideration and approval of the fiscal year 2020 Annual Public Art Plan. As you're aware, as part of our public and performing arts ordinance, it is a requirement for the Arts Commission to come before you annually and ask for your approval for their plan. During tonight's presentation, Jen's going to be sharing some of the vision and goals that the Arts Commission has for this future fiscal year, as well as talk about some of the highlights from the past fiscal year. They've been very active and had many projects and programs that have been very successful, as well as providing these recommendations for future public art projects. With that, I'd like to turn this over to Jen.
Thanks, Galene. Hello, Mayor and council. I'm Jen Barnes, and I'm excited to talk with you tonight about the Goodyear Arts and Culture Commission. The Arts and Culture Commission provides leadership in developing a community identity through the arts, then embraces, celebrates, and unites our diverse histories, beliefs, cultures, and aspirations. We strive to create public dialogue, advance education, and inspire civic pride through the arts. We engage and support the community through art. As you know, we have classes for all ages, and plan events that are family-friendly, and on a wide variety of topics and art medias. Through events like Ballet Under the Stars, hot coffee lectures, and library fine art shows, there is something for everyone. We create a sense of place that enhances the quality of life. It is good to have pride in your community and have events and activities that you can enjoy and perhaps participate in, and connect with people within your city without having to drive across town. We are part of providing these kinds of possibilities for our residents. Next, I will highlight some of our projects from fiscal year 2019. Goodyear Arts and Culture Program provides public art, exhibitions, special events, and celebrations through the fine and performing arts for all residents, and creates a culture of art within the city. We help Goodyear look great. Goodyear Arts and Culture Program provides public art, exhibitions, special events, and celebrations through the fine and performing arts for all residents and creates a culture of art within the city. We help Goodyear look great, adding to its value for current residents as well as making it attractive. I'm sorry, as well as making it attractive to future residents and businesses. In addition to our ongoing work within the community, we've added several new projects this year I'd like to highlight. We've had two public art installations. The first is the Goodyear Community Ballpark. I'm sorry, the Goodyear Community Park Stage Mosaic, which was a collaboration between artists Chris Kalash and the many Goodyear residents who made decorative tiles for it. It really sets the stage up as a visual centerpiece for the park and adds to the beauty of the area. The next installation was the Artist Embellished Traffic Cabinets, which is our pilot program to add original fine art to five traffic cabinets and add beauty and provide public art to these locations. We've also been enhancing the arts and education by adding a mobile museum in the schools, complete with lesson plans that can be checked out and used by teachers. We've also had an inaugural treasures for teachers pop-up shop of teacher resources at the Goodyear Ballpark. We're also excited that we were able to add three new arts events and programs. First, the Art Bash allowed the public to learn from professional artists to create art projects in many media. Second, Storyrise Goodyear, which is currently ongoing, is a storytelling workshop followed by a curated performance of storytelling, which is a partnership with Smalltooth Dog Publishing. Finally, we've added two sessions of youth theater camp in the summer. Now, I'd like to speak to you about what public art can do for our city. First, it creates a sense of place. Goodyear will be known for its beautiful and abundant public art, as well as its events and performances. Second, public art enhances and beautifies the built environment, adding splashes of color and vibrant imagery to our city. Third, it instills community pride. People love to be from a place that is beautiful and has a lot to offer. Fourth, it provides cultural and social value. We provide arts and activities that appeal to all ages. It makes you proud to invite your family and friends to Goodyear. Fifth, it increases economic attractiveness and promotes development. People want to be part of a vibrant, attractive city. Finally, it establishes a culture of art throughout Goodyear. We are helping lead the way by establishing that a high-quality arts and art events are part of Goodyear's identity. With the hopes it inspires both the public and private sectors to actively participate, adding to the beauty of the city. Next, I will speak to you about our goals. Our first goal is to meet the recommendations of the Goodyear 2025 General Plan, which was created with public input, so we'd like to deliver what the public would like to see. This includes integrating public art throughout the community. We also facilitate incorporating public art into city planning, like the kinetic sculpture that will be the centerpiece of the new recreation campus. Our second goal is to utilize local artists and involve Goodyear businesses to enhance Goodyear's economic vitality. For example, all of the traffic cabinet artists are from the West Valley, and they got input from local businesses in the creation of their designs. Third, we ensure community participation in the public arts. For example, we've held meetings for public input for the rec campus sculpture, and the traffic cabinet art was presented to the public for their comments at the chalk art festival before it was created. Now, I'd like to present some of the wonderful public arts projects that are in progress as part of the approved fiscal year 2019 plan. These projects meet the goal of including art in city facilities. We really appreciate your support in these. The Commission has approved the artists and design concepts for the projects listed on this slide that you see. We are very excited about the quality of the artists and the fact that they are both fellow Arizonans. First, we have selected well-known and popular metal artist Joe Tyler, who resides in the valley, to create public art at both Fire Stations 181 and 186. We have a committee for the development of these designs, which includes firefighters, and we have been responsive to their wishes. Fire Station 181's art will pay homage to the Goodyear firefighters with icons that they have chosen as important to them. Fire Station 186 will have a freestanding sculptural piece of art that will enhance the fire station and create a sense of identity. Both projects' completion dates will align with their respective construction dates. We also have selected an incredible artist for the sculpture at the rec campus, Joe O'Connell of Creative Machines out of Tucson. His concept is that of a very large, multisensory kinetic sculpture that will engage and connect people as they activate it. The completion date on this artwork will coincide with the construction date for the rec campus as it is part of the capital improvement project. This project is sure to become the centerpiece of the rec campus, as well as a prominent amenity to the city that will draw people from all over to itself. We feel confident that the quality of these projects will speak to the overall quality of life that Goodyear offers. We are eagerly looking forward to seeing the final designs, then the fabrication, and finally, the installation of these current projects.
Jen, thank you for that presentation. Go ahead, Galene.
We have a couple more slides to cover here, Mayor. Thank you, Jen. So, the projects that are on the slide here, these are to be considered over the next five fiscal years. And on this chart, you'll see that there is a recommended funding level for these projects, and this is a recommendation only. Any expenditures and approvals of those expenditures will occur during the annual budget process for the city. The first project that's on our list here is for Fire Station 188. Keeping it, being consistent with our fire stations, we have artwork going in at 181 and 186. We'd also like to see $40,000 of public art to be included in that capital project. This is, it really meets our goal of including public artwork in any of our new city facilities, and it really does define a community where these fire stations are built. We're able to actually have the artists look at that community, work with those firefighters, and develop artwork that really is responsive to that site. The light pole banners, as you all are very aware of, currently, we do three rotations of light pole banners. Currently, the spring training banners are up, but we also have public art banners as well as holiday banners. The Arts Commission is recommending that we do extend this project to have four rotations of banners. One, we'd like to see new public art banners be designed by our local artists. We'd also like to add a patriotic-themed banner into that rotation. So, this recommendation for $16,000 would include the commissioning of local artists to do new designs for our public art banners. As well as having the banners printed for the public art and the patriotic banners. And it includes the staff cost to change out those banners for that additional rotation. The next project where, is very near and dear to the Arts Commission hearts, it's a skate park mural. This project is, there currently is a mural at our skate park at Goodyear Community Park. It was completed by teenagers, local teenagers in our area. It's been up for about three years. It's starting to fade and show some wear, and we would really like to use this as an opportunity to engage our Follow Your Art Junior teens. Have them work with a professional artist. Let them, these emerging artists, get the opportunity to work through the public art process. Engage park users, go through the design process, and then ultimately have them paint that project. And the project recommendation for the funding level would be $6,000 for that project. This past year, as Jen mentioned, we had a very successful pilot program for our traffic cabinets. We've received very positive feedback for this project. So, the Commission is recommending to add ten more cabinets to this program. The recommendation is for applied artwork, which would be hand-painted or wrapped cabinets. And we are recommending $28,000 as the funding level to complete those ten cabinets. And the final project we see here in our five-year recommendation has been on our art plan for a few years. It's to celebrate Goodyear's 75th anniversary. The 75th anniversary is coming up in November of 2021. And as we started honing in on what this looks like, it is growing and developing more than just being a piece of art. And we're looking at what the celebration looks like. And we are considering having an event, special event planned with an art component. There will be a committee formed to really kind of start defining what that looks like, what that celebration is. And once that committee gets to meet, then we'll be able to determine a funding level for that project. These projects meet the goal to include artwork in spaces that are visited and accessible by the public, and they really do help create a sense of place for our city. Projects on this slide is the future forecast. So, this is beyond the five years. This is the Commission looking at what is possible. And this really falls into this establishing the culture of art. And when people think of Goodyear and being in the West Valley, that they associate it with the arts that we have in our city. So, the first project on this is at Goodyear Community Park. We were fortunate to add the mosaic mural on the fascia of the stage. It really adds a nice pop of color and really establishes that area so that when you're parking, it looks great. We'd also like to add an art shade element over that stage area. It would create a focal point for the park as you arrive. And additionally, we hold so many events there. We have our concert series, our chalk art in the park, Shakespeare in the Park, and various things. And this would be a nice place to embellish as a focal point because of the events that we do host there. The Commission is also recommending exploring park deposits in our north subdivision to have some artwork added there. This is a great opportunity to do some community building and placemaking in there by getting the community involved in the development of the artwork and the installation of that artwork. Additionally, we are looking at a gateway monument in southeast Goodyear. This would be the Western Avenue Corridor. The Commission is recommending looking at doing maybe an archway, something over the roadway, really celebrating the historic Goodyear and creating a sense of arrival for people coming into that area. One of the goals for the Arts Commission is also identifying areas that don't have any public art at this current time. And in South Goodyear, in the Estrella community, we don't have any public art up in this area. So, the Commission is exploring methods in which public art could be included in this area of our city. They're exploring right-of-way installations, application to pathways, elevated artworks. The top of left-hand side of the slide, you can see even a stop sign that instead of the post just being a plain post, there could be an artistic approach to that. So, there's many ways to bring small touches to our communities, to give them the look of a public art. Finally, the last project here in our future forecast is destination public art. Currently, we do look to put public art in places where public is already gathering. One method for art is to take it off the beaten path so that people have to choose to go there. It really encourages cultural tourism. And so, the Commission is exploring maybe the geographic center of Goodyear or other areas that are off the beaten path so that we do attract those visitors to our city to come see this. Similar to the conceptual there that's on the left side, the Seven Magic Mountains, that's in the Nevada desert. Anybody that's traveled down the I-40 in Texas that's seen Cadillac Ranch, those kind of public artworks, they're fun, they're quirky, but they are a destination, and people do travel to come see them. So, these five projects really reach that goal to add artworks in the city where we do not currently have artwork and would benefit from the inclusion of additional artwork. The proposed art plan really encourages the development of a sense of community and strengthens the quality of life for our residents. At this time, we ask council to consider the plan presented for approval, and we thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you very much. Nice job on both of you. All right, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? And I'd like a motion and a second to approve the FY 2020 Annual Public Art Plan as recommended by the Arts and Culture Commission. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Kano and a second by, I keep wanting to give him the vice tonight. Yeah, I know you would. And Councilman Pizzillo, open for council discussion.
All right, Councilman Pizzillo.
You know, being a numbers guy, I have really no clue on how to appreciate art, and you know that. And I appreciate some of the things they've done because I have no skill set whatsoever in that. Best I can do is stick people in even though they look pretty bad. But I am so pleased with one of the projects that you've done for myself personally that I kind of pushed was the cabinets. And the part I like most is the fact that they, and with all your art, you involve the public, you involve local artists. You also get feedback from where the art's going, just like you did with those cabinets. And I tell you, really, I think adds to the beauty of the city. We pride ourselves on being pristine. We pride ourselves on trying to maintain, you know, our right-of-ways, and we try to keep maintaining that as pristine as far as the look and see. And I think the art itself just adds to it. So, keep doing what you're doing. I really do appreciate it. I'm glad to see there's ten cabinets in there. The question is where, because I know one of the council members would like to see it a little farther south on some of those. So, I suspect you'll have some give and take of where to place them. But again, the artwork in my mind, and again, not being an artist, is just fantastic. So, again, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilman Stip.
And what is about to blow everyone's mind, if it's appropriate at some point, the $2,500 slush fund that each council member has. I'd like to push my $2,500 to the skate park, seed that project. I don't have any intention of using it this year, and if we're going to do something with it, I'd like to see it pushed in that direction. To get started, the skate park was really important to us on the fire department when it was built, right next to the fire station. I drive by there and see people of surprisingly all ages at the skate park. And I'd like to, I'd like to do that, so put my money where my mouth is. I'm generally the biggest critic, but I'm also behind-the-scenes supporter, and I want to show that in a very specific way.
Thank you, Bill. Councilmember Kano?
Galene and Jen, I just want to thank you for the work and for the Arts and Culture Commission for everything you do. Even public art is just one facet of the entire scope of what the Commission accomplishes. And I just thank you for being so visionary and creative. You have a very workable plan for now, but you're casting that vision out for the future. And these are the kinds of things that really enhance Goodyear quality of life. It helps us to create an identity that makes us unique and special. So, just very appreciative of your work and your visions.
Thank you. Councilman Loretano?
I want to thank you, Galene and Jen, and I see some other members of your commission I think are here. So, thank you for all the hard work. Because I know you guys have probably one of the most active volunteer commissions, because you guys meet a lot and do a lot of work. Just even some of the stuff you didn't mention that you were doing, the gingerbread, the, you know, it just, people love that. I had so many people just for that say, oh, oh, are we going to do that again next year? Because I didn't know about it in time to get it all done. So, I really do think it does bring a sense of community. I think it is very important for our culture. I love the traffic cabinets. I've seen them, obviously, in Avondale, but I've also seen them, like, when we were in California, we stayed at Mission Bay, and we were walking by one, and I'd go, ours are going to be better than theirs. And they are. They're so, they just add a pop. You know, you're driving around, it's just very cheerful. It really adds the color and the life to the area. It's not just brown, you know? So, it's so nice to see, and I'm hoping we can get some up by the ballpark and up to Estrella in this round or, you know, something we're going to keep going as we grow. And, you know, maybe that's something we can look at. We have new areas that we make sure we're not doing catch-up. As new areas come online, maybe we can see about adding those. So, I think you have a lot of great programs. So, I do thank you. And I assume we're going to see Councilmember Stip at the skate park?
I was going to ask that. You took my statement out. That's what I was going to do. Make a deal here tonight, yeah.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hampton?
I'm going to echo a little bit. I think, yeah, the arts are very important to the city and the culture and the feel of the community and bring people together closer. So, I also agree. I like, I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have been putting into it, like the vision that you're casting. And what you've already done, set the foundation for going forward as well. I'm looking forward to the 75th anniversary of the city. I think that's going to be a big and a good event for the city for historical purposes and also for the arts. And I'm really excited about the, let's say, the cultural tourism type ideas too. I think that's a really neat, a neat idea. And a way to have some local tourism and some more senses, uniqueness and pride in the community as well. So, looking forward to that too. I think there's some possibilities. So, I think it'd be pretty, pretty fun. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I would like to ask if you can share some of the pictures or the proposed artwork that's going to be going into the park and also on the fire stations before it's done. I mean, if we could see that. And then, my next question to you is, I'm hopeful that you are asking Goodyear artists first to do all of this. And then, when we can't fill it, we're going outside of Goodyear because we have so many talented residents that really probably would love to be doing some of this. And while you are inviting West Valley or whatever, but I really want to focus on Goodyear because it's our construction tax dollars that pay for the arts. And I would like our artists to benefit from that first, and then if we can't get them, then go outside.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you. Yes, that's a very good point, and we do strive to encourage our Goodyear artists to And we do strive to encourage our Goodyear artists to apply for any of our public art opportunities. Even our fine art opportunities at our library, and we engage many of them. We've got this great community that we're building, and so we, each year, we keep adding more Goodyear artists into this community that we're establishing, and we definitely strive to have them have first grab at whatever the art opportunities are. Good, thank you.
Well, I agree with everything you said tonight. You've done a great job. Your committee's done a good job, and we look forward to the future. So, thank you very much. So, with that, let's vote on this, all right? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. You're on your way. You're welcome. All right, Councilwoman, we're at the end. Does Council have any comments, updates, requests for information? None? Oh, yes. Yes, Councilmember Pizzillo.
There was three of us that had the great opportunity to read the first, second graders at Palm Valley. I guess Wally was there, I was there, and Laura was there. And I tell you, those kids really appreciate us coming to reading to them. They really did. And out of all the things that we do on City Council, to be honest with you, that's one of the favorite things I enjoy doing. You know, whether it's serving food there in the cafeteria or reading to the kids. To me, that's number one on my list, so I had a great time. And I want to thank John for bringing in the treats because that made him a folk hero among those kids there, so thanks, John.
Councilman Kano.
A couple of weeks ago, the Goodyear Faith and Community Roundtable took a tour of the Phoenix Rescue Mission and the Central Arizona Shelter Services. And I wanted to thank Christina Panatescu, if I think I may have said it somewhat correct, for her work with that roundtable and for putting that tour together. It was very eye-opening. It was helpful for us to understand the scope of services that are available in the, for the homeless. And both agencies are trying to cast visions for the West Valley, for providing services. And so, anyway, it was very, very helpful for us to see what is provided.
Thank you. Next, anybody else? Councilman Hampton.
Yeah, I attended the Culture Pop event. I don't want to take away from the mayor, but I saw her in action at the naturalization ceremony, which was a great celebration of new Americans coming into the country. So, that was really neat, and it was pretty good for my kids to see that as well. So, that was a great opportunity, a good celebration to kick off that Avondale-Goodyear party celebration. So, I thought it was good. It was a little chilly, but I was able to hang in there for a little while. So, I don't want the staff to be disappointed with the lack of numbers from last year because I think, I think just the weather affected the numbers. So, but I think overall, I think it was a great event, and I'd like to see it continue. So, my family enjoyed it, and everybody I talked to seemed like they really enjoyed it as well. And there was a lot of participation and a lot of vendors, a lot of, it was just a good atmosphere, so. So, it was fun, good event.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. I would like to publicly thank Captain Patrick Doyle and his fire crew for the excellent care they gave my husband three weeks ago and transported John. He was in the hospital almost three weeks, and because they were so diligent in getting him there quickly, they were able to stabilize him much quicker than we had anticipated. So, I just want to thank you for that. And I want to remind the residents that when you call 911, you are getting the best of the best, whether it's for police or fire. Our professional firefighters and policemen are there, Johnny on the spot. So, we thank them all for their service, and they're there when you need them.
I agree with you, and I'm sure many of our residents. And we're so happy to hear that your husband's better, so. All right, City Manager, you have anything for us this evening to report?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recap on this past Saturday, February 9th. Our Police Department and Fire Department hosted the Lids on Kids Bike Rodeo at the ballpark. Police, Fire Department, Community Risk Reduction Staff, and 18 volunteers worked to make sure bikes were in proper working order, taught kids rules of the road, and properly fitted bike helmets, of course, in the very cold weather, learning about bike safety. Arizona Family did air the event on their morning show and again during the evening broadcast to help educate viewers on this important lifesaving topic. Social media posts and Facebook Live collectively reached 7,000 followers, so that was very successful. And then also, just to recap, the 2019 Culture Pop. We do estimate the crowd of only 1,400 people this year. Due to the cold, that compares to almost 4,000 we had the year prior. But the event did begin with 39 individuals becoming U.S. citizens in the naturalization ceremony, and both Mayor Lord and Mayor Ken Wise delivered remarks. And just to recap the event, we had 52 vendor booths, five roaming performers, four street performances, three main stage performances, 10 family stage performances, and numerous free activities and targeted carnival rides. And of course, with Avondale staff will be getting together to kind of debrief the event and talk about what we can do for next year. Thank you.
Well, thank you for reporting that. It is unfortunate, the weather, and it was so cold. But I agree with the immigration ceremony. It always means meaningful to me because my parents came over from Greece at separate times, so. And you looked out on the audience, and if you saw it on the news that evening, they interviewed some of the people that had obtained their citizenship. And it was very heartwarming, the remarks they were making and the accomplishments because it's a course, I mean, it's like a college course you're going to take, and you need to know the Constitution and your rights in America, and so it is very meaningful. The next meeting will be a work session on February 25th, 2019, at 4:30, and a regular meeting immediately following. Did the Council have any other requests of the City Manager? Because we didn't go by that. I know Wally had one about seeing some of the photos or the pictures, was it with, for the art?
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah, so if you can record that one, okay? All right. And Brandon, yes, Brandon.
I think Wynted's going to take care of it, but I was also going to talk about, I got a call about the La Loma Pool heater being potentially out at the pool and swim teams not being able to swim there. So, I'm just going to pass it along, but thank you.
All right, good. With that, this meeting is adjourned.